I hereby call the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting to order on Thursday, December 4th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Recording Secretary, will you please conduct roll call?
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Jaguet?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson? Absent. Commissioner Reyes?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Absent. And Commissioner Wu?
Present.
Vice Chair Zacarias Torres?
Here.
And Chairperson Herrera? Records show you have seven members present. Chair Herrera, you have a quorum.
Cool. Thank you. Now we have, the next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our December Parks and Recs meeting. We'll start off the meeting today with recognizing employees of the month as well as our volunteers of the quarter. Can we start off with Commissioner Jaguet?
All right. So first employee of the month, we have Lisa Malunal. Lisa is a part-time employee. She's been with the city for six months. She's a clerical aide and is nominated by her supervisor, Mary Bell Silva. In her short time with guest services team, Lisa has already made a remarkable impact. Her positive attitude, strong attention to detail, and exceptional customer service skills have quickly set her apart. Lisa consistently steps up to help with any task given to her, approaching every responsibility with enthusiasm and professionalism. Recently, she has been covering extra shifts to help support the team during a staffing shortage. Her willingness to step in whenever needed demonstrates her dedication and team-first mindset. Lisa is truly a wonderful addition to our team and her contributions have not gone unnoticed. Her reliability, work ethic, and commitment to excellent service make her highly deserving of this recognition. Thank you, Lisa, for all your help and support.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Nomination is for Jose Rangel. He's been with the city 1.9 years. His position is a transportation driver. Jose Rangel currently serves as a driver for the Senior Cruisers Transportation Program. In the close to two years that Jose has worked for the city, he has influenced the lives of the seniors he works with in a positive way. His jovial demeanor and professionalism has contributed to the growth and participation in the transportation program. Jose is very enthusiastic about his work and goes above and beyond and makes all participants feel welcomed, comfortable, and appreciated. On his downtime, Jose is the first to offer help around the center with calling bingo and lotería, along with anything else needed at the centers. In the process, he has cultivated positive working relationships with the seniors and other city staff. Jose is eager to learn and is always willing to take on new challenges and opportunities to enhance program operations. Jose's work ethic, experience, and positive attitude have been instrumental in the success of the senior transportation program, and we are all proud to recognize him as Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Jose, and your support for transportation to the seniors. Commissioner Diaz, would you like to read?
I have Leo Santos as Employee of the Month. I'm sorry. So is the volunteer of the month of December? Okay. Of the quarter? Okay. And his supervisor is Bianay Mungia. Bianay mentions that she would like to nominate Leo Santos for Valentine of the Month for November. Since the beginning of August, Leo has volunteered 19 and 1/2 hours, making him our leading teen in volunteer hours. Leo has supported multiple events across our community, including volunteering at El Salvador Community Center for both Noche de Cultura and the Monster Mash event. He also assisted with setup at Rose Bowl Walker Community Center for Dia de los Muertos celebration. Throughout each event, Leo has shown reliability, enthusiasm, and a genuine commitment to serving others. His positive attitude and consistent dedication make him an excellent representative of our program's mission. Bianay says she's proud to nominate Leo for this recognition. Congratulations, Leo.
Congrats, Leo. Vice Chair Zacarias Torres?
I have Itzel Espinoza. She's been working with the city for four years as a community center aide. I would like to nominate Itzel Espinoza for Employee of the Month for her outstanding leadership and dedication as a community center aide at Garfield Community Center. In her short time with the youth and teen section, she has made a significant impact through her initiative, professionalism, and strong work ethic. Itzel took the lead in coordinating our kids' night out event at Salgado Recreation Center, overseeing youth activities and supporting teen volunteers with confidence and organization. She also introduced the idea of an intergenerational volunteer opportunity, which led to successful workshops at Southwest Senior Center and Santa Anita Senior Center, creating meaningful connections between teens and older adults. Additionally, Itzel plays an essential role in the teen excursion program, where she helps plan and consistently takes the lead during excursions. Her attentiveness, leadership, and ability to engage teens ensures each outing runs smoothly and safely. Itzel embodies true leadership and consistently goes above and beyond to support her team and enhance our programs. Her positive impact on the youth, volunteers, and the community makes her highly deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Itzel.
Commissioner Reyes?
This Community Service Award goes to Jill Rogers. Jill Rogers has been a volunteer in the Education Department of San Ana Zoo since 2016. Her background in education and love of animals is evident in every interaction she has with guests of all ages. Jill has become a primary figure in the Wild Wednesdays Storytime Program, both reading stories and safely presenting Ambassador Animals for guests, even stepping up to ensure the program continues when staff are unavailable. Jill shines in safari and other special events, bringing out an appreciation of animals in both children and adults alike. The zoo is truly grateful to Jill for nearly 800 hours' service, her dedication to zoo programs, animals, and guests' experiences, and her enthusiasm for what the future holds. Congratulations, Jill.
I can go next. I'm happy to nominate Sabrina Gaslump for Employee of the Month in recognition for her dedication to the care of one of our ring-tailed lemurs that recently needed an immense amount of medical care. Due to an ulcer on her cornea, the lemur needed four different eye drops four times a day. In addition to the huge amount of time necessary to accomplish this, Sabrina showed a great deal of patience and consistency with the treatment, as well as understanding of the risks and rewards that were required. Sabrina worked with the veterinary team to establish a routine that minimized stress for the lemur and ensured each treatment was done safely and effectively. Her approach and willingness to communicate needs and changes directly contributed to the animal's overall well-being throughout the several months of intensive care. Sabrina's dedication to this lemur and her medical needs made a meaningful difference in her comfort and recovery. She's a valuable asset to the zoo and always prioritizing the animal's well-being, and she's been with the city for eight years. Thank you so much, Sabrina. Commissioner Wu?
Yes. Yes, I have Anthony Cortez. He's a part-time employee of the month. He's a clerical aide, and Anthony Cortez has consistently gone above and beyond in supporting our team, and his recent contributions have made him a tremendous impact in our operation. Anthony took the lead in setting up our tents, adding some beautiful decorations, and creating new graphics, and helping elevate the look and function of the temporary check-in space. His attention to detail and willingness to step in wherever needed have greatly improved the efficiency of our daily operations. Beyond his work ethics, Anthony's reliability and positive attitude have been invaluable. He is someone who can always count on. His commitment to the team shines in everything he does. We are beyond proud to work with Anthony. His hard work, creativity, dedication, and truly makes a meaningful difference. Thank you for all your help and support. Thank you, Anthony.
Commissioner Diaz?
I have full-time employee of the month, Mary Long. Mary is an exceptional management analyst who positively sets the tone for the entire Santa Ana Zoo team. She consistently takes on complex tasks that support multiple departments, ensuring operations run smoothly and efficiently. Her ability to juggle high-level responsibilities while staying organized and calm makes her an invaluable asset. Mary's dedication to visitor services further demonstrates her commitment to delivering the best experience possible to our community. Always willing to jump in whenever she's needed, Mary approaches every challenge with enthusiasm and a smile. Her collaborative spirit, reliability, and can-do attitude uplifts those around her and strengthens the zoo's daily functioning. Mary's contributions are going into every part of our operation, making her a truly deserving candidate for Employee of the Month. Thank you, Mary. Congratulations.
I believe I have the last one. Commissioner Wu? Jaguet?
Yes.
And Madam Secretary?
Okay. I have another employee of the month for the month of November. Part-time employee. We have Jennifer Miranda. Jennifer has been with the city for 10 months and is a senior program leader and was nominated by Ricardo Ornelas. Jennifer has proudly served the city of Santa Ana for the past 10 months as a dedicated member for our reservations team. She consistently demonstrates exceptional professionalism, adaptability, and commitment to providing outstanding customer service to our community. Although Jennifer sometimes doubts herself, her work tells a different story. She consistently exceeds expectations and willingly takes on new roles and responsibilities for the benefit of the office and team. Her determination is unmatched. She never backs down from a challenge and continuously strives to grow in her position. Her personal journey is equally inspiring. She moved to the U.S. in 2017 without speaking any English. Today, she serves as the welcoming face of our office, greeting guests with warmth, confidence, and the highest level of professionalism. Her progress is a testament to her hard work and perseverance. We are incredibly proud of how far she has come and are deeply grateful for the positivity and dedication that she brings to our workplace. For these reasons, we nominate Jennifer Miranda for Employee of the Month. Thank you.
Vice Chair Zacarias Torres?
I have Cecilia Smith. She's been with the city for three years as a recreation specialist in aquatics. I am pleased to nominate Cecilia Smith for Employee of the Month. Cecilia began as a lifeguard and has advanced to recreation specialist, now leading the lifeguard team and overseeing daily aquatics operations with professionalism and expertise. Over the last summer season, the department delivered over 4,000 swim lessons, a feat that would not have been possible without Cecilia's leadership. She played a pivotal role in training and mentoring lifeguards, ensuring that they had the skills and confidence to deliver high-quality lessons while maintaining safety and program standards. Cecilia is committed to continuous learning and professional growth. She has been a scholarship recipient from the AOAP Organization, Association of Aquatic Professionals, two years in a row, and recently completed the American Red Cross Instructor/Trainer Academy, earning her Water Safety Instructor/Trainer Certification, the highest rank in Red Cross aquatics training. Beyond her technical expertise, Cecilia is an exceptional team player. She collaborates seamlessly with peers within our department and colleagues from other organizations, sharing knowledge and elevating the field of aquatics as a whole. Her dedication, leadership, and willingness to learn makes her highly deserving of Employee of the Month recognition. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Cecilia. This is for the employee of the month being nominated by Executive Director Hawkescott to nominate Francisco Arroyo, who's a full-time employee, been 21 years with the city. And the executive director is pleased to nominate Francisco Arroyo for Employee of the Month. They began as an accounting assistant and has advanced to their current position, Principal Management Analyst, leading to the administrative team and overseeing daily operations with professionalism and expertise. In his role, Francisco consistently demonstrates an extraordinary level of reliability, strategic thinking, and service-oriented leadership. He has strengthened internal processes, improved financial reporting accuracy, and proactively identified solutions that enhance our department's efficiency. Francisco is often the first to step in when complex issues arise, providing clear guidance and ensuring that projects move forward smoothly. His calm demeanor, strong analytical judgment, and commitment to excellence have made him a trusted resource for both staff and management. Beyond his financial expertise, Francisco is an exceptional team player and collaborates seamlessly with peers within the department and within all divisions and colleagues from other organizations, sharing knowledge and elevating the field of aquatics as a whole. His dedication, leadership, and willingness to learn make him highly deserving of Employee of the Month recognition to recognize Francisco Arroyo. Thank you all so much. Reading off the recognitions may seem a little mundane, but I think considering everything that's happening nationally, locally, like our staff are so valuable and you all do so much, and so these recognitions, I think, speak volumes, I think, to the work. So I just want to acknowledge staff and our volunteers. Next on the agenda, we have public comment section. This is the time for the commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional requests for speaker cards once we begin the public comment session. If you have not already, please submit your request to the recording secretary. Folks will have three minutes to speak. And if you're on Zoom, dial *9 from your phone or click on the button labeled Raise Your Hand now to be in the speaker queue once public comments commence. Recording Secretary, do we have any in-person or Zoom public speakers?
Yes, we have one in person and one email comment. I'll have the in-person go first.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have actually four items. I have three minutes to do it in, but I'll make it quick, and I'll go in a hierarchy. My name is Gail Leboz. I live in Waterfaya, which is a Willard area. I am deeply rooted into the community. My family has over 120 years in Santa Ana, and she is my city. I love her dearly. I come to you tonight because I'm very upset with the name that was chosen by this team for the new park on Flower and Tenth. You're not giving any recognition at all to the thousands, hundreds of thousands of kids that have gone through Willard Junior High, me in particular. I bought a copy of my school newspaper from 50 years ago called The Willard Echo. To give some depth to that, my father went to Willard and also my grandfather. That's how long Willard has been around. We need a park that identifies and hones in into Willard. Their mascot used to be the Willard Indians, and it was changed to the Jaguars. It should be called Jaguar Park or even Echo Park, not a Park del Pueblo No Seque. I'm very disappointed in this team for doing that. I was on a Zoom, I heard you in Zoom, and I was driving on the freeway. I couldn't respond, and also I coach for Parks and Recreation. I coach football, so I wasn't able to attend some of the meetings here, which leads us to my next issue. I love coaching these kids. I volunteered my time. I'm a 64-year-old grandmother, and it's pretty funny to see me out there and me and my sister coaching these kids, but we love the future of Santa Ana. And all I ask, all I ask for Parks and Recreation is to give us the equipment to teach these children how to play football. This is an example of the flags that I got for the past three years. I'm very upset that they don't see in their budget the importance of having functional flags. That's it. A functional flag and a functional play clock. As you know, in football, it's based on a clock, and this is the clock that the refs use. That's it. Now, they might think it's minimal, it's funny, even comical, but it's quite embarrassing to see on the stand that this city has so much money and are spending so much money everywhere else and cannot give money to these kids. It's very upsetting. I know for a fact from talking to America, there was over $400,000 given to Parks and Recreation for fees you charge for outside organizations to utilize our fields. Could we please take away $5,000 from that $400,000 and give our kids a working clock for football and some new flags? I tried to bring other parents in here, but I got notified that the meeting was changed today, like at 3:30 today, so it was a last-minute thing. I couldn't get my team in here. One high note, I was working as a poll worker at Salgado Center, and that's a great staff out there. They're a great team out there. They really showed us a good time, and I did get to witness a political program out there for people of special needs, kids of special needs, which is, I applaud the city for that. It was a beautiful thing to see. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Recording Secretary, any additional comments?
Yes. The email public comment was, hello, my name is Jeff. I live in Washington Square, and I wanted to speak regarding plant selection in our neighborhood parks. I have previously inquired about plant selection in our parks and receiving the answer that we plant mostly native or drought-tolerant plants. However, time and again, I see the trees, like crepe myrtle installed everywhere along our streets and in our parks. I've noticed that the crepe myrtle is heavily used in the Tenth and Flower Street Park as well. I understand that people enjoy the blooms, but these trees provide essentially zero ecological value and require water during the summer, which obviously, when California is naturally dry, there are many suitable small trees or shrubs that are native to a region that could fill this role. To name a few, lemonade berry, Catalina cherry, desert willow, mountain mahogany, or toyan. These native trees support hundreds of times more life than the crepe myrtle. This is only one such lost opportunity, which is harming our environment and costing taxpayers more money in water and maintenance. I encourage you to play a more active role in plant selection in our parks, to always choose locally native plants when possible. These plants are best suited to our environment and help support life around us. Thank you.
Thank you, Recording Secretary. Great. So I think, so that will end the public comment section. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Commissioners, do you wish to pull anything from the consent calendar, which just includes our, excuse, abstances? If there's no one that wishes to pull any items, can I get a motion to approve item one or the consent calendar?
I motion to approve the consent calendar of item one.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Do I get a second?
Second?
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct roll call?
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Wu, seconded by Vice Chair Zacarias Torres to approve item one of consent calendar. I'll now conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaguet?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson? Absent. Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Absent. And Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zacarias Torres?
Yes.
Chair Herrera?
Yes.
The vote is seven ayes, zero nays, two absents. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Executive Director, I know at least pertaining to the consent calendar or the meeting of the minutes of the last meeting or the discussion around the calendar of the next year's meetings, if there was just like an updated, I know that, or on our website or somewhere that it can just be publicly available. So that was just my one comment.
Yeah, just after this meeting, we are updating it. My coworker back here, Oscar, is the one that helps oversee that, and we are going to be updating it to the new calendar, which will coincide with you, as well as the youth will be doing the same. So it will be updated.
Cool. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to, that's the end of the consent calendar. We'll move on to the informational items, and I'll now turn this over to our Park Services Superintendent Jorge Azvedo, as well as our Parks Public Works Senior Deputy Director, Mike Ortiz, to present the Public Works Agency Park Services Staff Report.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jorge Azvedo, Jorge Azvedo, Park Service Superintendent for the city of Santa Ana, providing you guys a Park Services update tonight. And as we come to the end of the year, it's a good opportunity to kind of recap on what our team does and how we are and what our core services are and what we do for our parks in keeping them green, clean, and safe. So as we continue to make our parks better and make everybody's lives better through parks, like I mentioned, I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to share what our team does, how we are good stewards of our parks and how that kind of goes in hand-in-hand in our maintenance. So here on the screen, you kind of, I wanted to show just a lot of illustrations of what goes on on a day-to-day basis, just, and it's like Commissioner, the chair was mentioning, might seem mundane, but it's really kind of the core of what we do. Everything from the mowing, irrigation component, fertilizing, pest management, you know, infill maintenance. It happens, debris pickup, you know, day-to-day, it's a 24/7 operation that we kind of operate under our shop. Another component of what we do in our shop, I'd like to remind everybody, is the pressure washing. Pressure washing happens to a lot of our, all our park amenities, which is playgrounds, hardscapes, shade structures, picnic areas, tables, fitness equipments. So essentially, we have a pressure washing program that kind of goes around the city and hits all our amenities, you know, on a side corner routine basis, just to keep them clean and usable for our patrons. Another thing I want to highlight in our shop is a lot of the in-house work that gets done. On the right, you'll see the general maintenance team breaking out concrete, reporing new concrete. They'll break out concrete to repair, you know, main lines, lateral lines, sewer lines. In the middle, you kind of see our irrigation team digging out valve boxes, repairing, once again, irrigation repairs, all the stuff that kind of gets buried in the ground that we don't physically see above ground, but is what's critical to keeping our parks green. On the left, you know, staff fertilizing the greens in the lawn bowling center, but this happens to all our parks. We maintain about 370 acres citywide. This is a great project that wanted, you know, a shout-out to our recreation team, our Deputy Director, Tempa Gano, our Executive Director, Hawk, and how they collaborated with Kaboom. And it was essentially like a private-public partnership to make this playground whole. We had, I don't want to not misspeak, on the nonprofits organizations or profit organizations, Pacific Lake Foundation, McDonald's, I think, assisted. Essentially, it's at Sandpoint Park, we collaborated with Kaboom. They were able to coordinate with Landscape Structures, who provided the playground. We've, our team, we took over some of the concrete to make an ADA accessible path to it, some of the rubberized, a lot of the rubberized surfacing that was installed, and it was just, you know, a great, great project all the way around that was facilitated through our recreation team and kind of delivered. and kind of delivered hand in hand with our general maintenance team and the volunteers. So it's, if you haven't been out there, it's open. It's an awesome, awesome playground. And here's another in-house project. You know, this kind of speaks to the talents that we have in our shop. We really, so for the people who are not familiar with Lily Keen, it kind of sits low to our water table out there. So a lot of the field and a lot of the soil is high in salt content. So it's really hard to grow anything out there. So this year, they took it upon themselves. We collaborated with a lot of CIP projects throughout the city, imported about 2,000 cubic yards of sand. Were able to kind of raise the playing surface about a foot to about two feet throughout the entire field to kind of get us off that water table. Our team did all the, we routed all the irrigation, we routed all the main line, installed the sprinklers, reseeded, and we're hopefully scheduled to open at the end of this month. And so here's some of the progress that's just kind of, it's been happening as the turf and the seed germinate. And with that, I'll pass it on to my Deputy Director, Mike Ortiz.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Very proud and always so impressed of what our park maintenance team does out there. And I can confidently say that if we had more general maintenance staff, we could build our own park. We wouldn't have to hire any contractors. I know I could safely say that. But because we are limited with staff, we do hire outside big contractors to help us with some of the capital projects that we have going on in the city. And today, filling in for some big shoes, now that Susie Frigenic has retired, I'm here helping out, and I'm going to highlight three projects, all in various different phases. But I'm happy to share on any and all capital projects that are happening throughout our park and trail system. These are just three that I'll highlight today. So very excited. I know you'll have further conversations on the 10th and Flower Park after this presentation. But this project is currently out to bid. We will get bids from contractors on the 18th of December. And if everything goes well, you will see this getting awarded for a construction contract in February. So that would put us in a timeline to have a park open by the end of the calendar year, 2026 calendar year. So that's exciting. The next one will be the Cypress Fire Station. It's in active construction, so I'm happy to share on that. And then lastly, one that we recently completed was the Santiago Park Phase Two. So on 10th and Flower, if you're not familiar with this location or haven't driven by recently, the street portion of the project is pretty much done. So if you try to drive west on 10th to exit on Flower, you can't do that anymore. You have a new cul-de-sac there. And the reason we did that was to expand on our open space. So you're going to have a much bigger park thanks to the abandoning of that portion of street. So it's exciting. There'll be a basketball court, playground area, shade area, and a nice big grass area for people to bring their pets. So I mentioned the schedule. If you have any more questions, feel free to ask regarding this future park at 10th and Flower. The Cypress Fire Station, a very popular project. This was funded thanks to community backing. The community really made this project happen. It's a historical building that is in active construction. It's exciting. We've demoed the attachment in the back that was never permitted. It has no historical integrity. But the contractors there are working every day, and we expect this project to also be done by the end of 2026. Santiago Park Phase Two is gorgeous. It is gorgeous. It is an extension of the Gas House project that was completed a couple of years now, right? Or a year and a half ago. Time flies. But this park is now completed, and we are inviting you. We all would love to invite you on Tuesday at noon to join us for the ribbon cutting ceremony that will take place there. So I know a flyer is coming. Our recreation team takes the lead on putting together this nice event in conjunction with the City Manager's Office. But the park is gorgeous. Bring your friends, your family. And we can't wait to move forward with Phase Three. This is all possible due to extra grant funding that we get from the Coastal Conservancy. So they'll be there. Feel free to thank them if you run into them and let them know that we're excited to move forward with Phase Three as well. That Phase Three would be the eastern portion, where the design is done, and now we're seeking construction funding for that phase. So a lot of exciting things, only scratching the surface here with these three projects. But with that, I think we'll kick it off to any questions you might have for Park Services.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the Commission? We were left speechless.
Yeah, Commissioners, real quick. As I did send you guys an email about the Azu Rivers Edge opening, once I do get all this information for Tuesday, I will send it out to you guys as well as our youth commissioners. Because as Mike said, it is a gorgeous piece of the, it's a piece of the puzzle. You know, we got Phase Three up next, but also, we also want to highlight out there what we've done in Phase One with the addition of the lighting, the new pass, fencing, the restrooms, the lawn bowling center. I mean, it's just Santiago Park's really turned into a really gorgeous park. And when we've gone out there the last couple of days, we're actually seeing residents from other cities complimenting and coming. And, you know, so I do hope to get you guys out there as well because that's really, we've really turned that park around. So thank you.
I did have a comment or question in relationship to the, thank you. I finally got to see on Rosita. The sign got lit up maybe a month ago. And I was like, this is great. I really love that there was attention, you know, because it had been off, I think, for some time. So it finally went online. So I just want to thank your team for that. And then my question in relationship to, I know Phase Three, you mentioned for Santiago Park design. I saw that the design was already kind of finished or complete and kind of maybe tying this question. I know the Eco Center is adjacent to that. And this question around maybe like native plant selection or how plants are kind of selected for, is Phase Three, the plants already identified? Or if not, I just wanted to?
Yes, thank you for the question. The plants have been identified. As you know, Susie was a landscape architect who was really big into the horticulture and all of the themes there. So will be very much in line with the rest of the park. If you did have any comments or special requests, landscaping is very easy to modify. But yeah, absolutely. It should be in line and in theme with the natural state of that park. That is one of our, even the maintenance on that park is unique, where we don't go in there and cut things. We let them kind of grow old and stay in their natural habitat. So absolutely, we're very cognizant of that.
Great, thank you. That's the only comment I have, the two comments I have. Great, next, thank you so much Superintendent Azavedo and Deputy Director Ortiz. I'll now invite our Executive Director to present on item number three.
Thank you, Commission. Just want to give you an update on some direction we did receive from the City Manager's Office on the 10th and Flower Park Stream naming. When we went out to get the bidding and the names like that, we only had a week to really do things like that. So we didn't get much feedback. We didn't get, you know, we tried to do what we could. So at this time, we are going to be redoing the entire 10th and Flower Park naming. However, we were also tasked as Parks Recreation to come up with a better way to get the community outreach. With previous parkings, park namings, we have been getting more and more outreach because our team's been raised for teaching what we're doing. And what we are presenting here, or just giving you some information, is what they proposed, that we are working with the City Manager's Office as well as all parties involved to give you an overview to show that we are really going to be concentrating on the area of where Flower Park is and trying to get the best name out there by involving all constituents in the community. So if you could just give me a bit to go through this presentation. So as you guys know, when we are naming a park, we want to be aligned with our ordinance NS 1683 and Community Engagement Framework. The proposed city park naming process established a transparent, constant, and community-centered approach for naming a new or renovated parks in accordance with ordinance NC 1683. The process ensures meaningful public participation, coordination across city departments, and structured review by advisory bodies and the city council. So the naming criteria, you guys all familiar with it. Those are what park names must align with one or more of the following categories. One, geography or environmental identity, natural features or surrounding area, historical significance, connection to neighborhood or site history, major donor recognition, which is substantial contributions of land or funding. And last but not least, distinguished community service, which is significant contributions from former, not current civic leaders or employees. So one of the things that our team has been doing over the past couple of months, as well as years, is on our Parks Recreation page, we're creating up sites to kind of show the progress of a park development from the start to the get-go until the final, and working with our Parks Maintenance Team and Public Works Agency. So our website is going to continue to, you know, be set up during construction phase, which is a dedicated project subpage that will be created depending on the project to support transparency and engagement. The page will include concept designs, construction schedules, park, project park history, funding details, and a calendar of key dates. A naming opportunity link and widget will be added to the city's parks project webpage. Three, you know, how are we going to collect the names of suggestions? And we've listened to the community. We've listened to everyone, feedback, emails, phone calls. And these are the ways we are going to be coming up with the names. So the city will use multiple engagement methods to gather broad community input. One, PRA staff will submit three ordinance compliant name options vetted by the City Manager's Office. Two, outreach to the ward-specific city council member, our youth commissioners, and you as our Parks Recreation Commissioners for constituent engagement. So we're going to be asking all three of them to really, you know, go on to community of your wards to get people more involved, to submit names, to suggest names, to get really involved. Three, we are going to work with getting name collections at, with our neighborhood associations through meetings, either project events, and/or, you know, having QR codes out there. We'll also be reaching out to the neighborhood associations in the vicinity of that area or that, where the park is located to see if we can maybe probably set up a special meeting for this, for the park. Because that, some neighborhood meetings do not meet regularly. So for example, there's a park that, you know, is in a ward or in a neighborhood association that doesn't meet regularly. We can probably try to schedule a meeting, push it out there to try to get the Q M's more involved. Three, we will have public submission through our online forum at, and that's our website, sanfro.org, help us name our parks. And then last but not least, something we have been doing and we have gotten really big at is our promotion through our social media newsletters, project webpage, you know, any way we can get the word out there. So once this is all done, you know, staff will review and have a name selection. So PRCSA and the City Manager's Office staff will review submissions, removing ineligible or duplicate names. And then an internal committee will select four finalist names to move forward for public voting. Five, the community voting, which will be for about a month. A public voting period will be hosted online and promoted through city's communication channels. And again, could also be going to neighborhood meetings, our events, you know, any of our activities will be out there. Voting access will be available on the project page as well, naming opportunities page, and/or the QR codes like I just mentioned at events and/or meetings. From there, it will go to the Commission and Council review. Our staff will present the four names and results to our Parks Recreation Commission, as well as our Youth Commission. And with the recommendations issued, we will then forward it over to our Planning Commission with recommendations issued. And last but not least, we will submit it to the city council for final approval and selection name. The goal is to finalize the name 90 days prior to the park's ribbon cutting. Because in most cases with some of our parks, we are getting special design signs that need to be put out with the contractor in time so they can be ready for the thing. As well as we want to, you know, start promoting the park as that name, you know, to get, you know, the public excited for it. And then finally, the final announcement implication, the approved park name will be announced as part of the ribbon cutting ceremony. Materials, city staff will update all signage, digital platforms, maps, GIS, and branding elements reflect the official new name. So with that being said, that is going to be our attempt and our view to get the community more involved. As of right now, 10th and Flower is the only park that we have on the books and for the foreseeable future, as we do not have any other parks that are up and coming right now. So we see this as a good opportunity to really hone in how we can get the community engaged and more involved. So when do other opportunities come up to rename a park? Or if we do, you know, build another park, we can get better input with everyone. And that is my presentation. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. But like I said, this is more for an informational report and us working with the City Manager's Office to come up with a solution that involves everyone in the community as well as that's involved with the project.
Great, thank you, Executive Director. And as mentioned, this is just a receivable file. So there's no, it's not a new business item for us to make motions, but we can ask questions of the actual report. But is there any comments or questions?
And one thing I did forget, I did forget to mention that we will be starting this whole process in January to, you know, I know that's going to be one of the questions, when are you going to start this? We're going to be starting early January, and we're going to be working with the neighborhoods around 10th and Flower to, you know, if they do not have meetings scheduled, we will try to get meetings scheduled, as well as we'll work with the neighborhood associations, our social media to really get the word out to get more community engagements. I might add, when we renamed the park at Bristol Tolliver, we had quite a few people get, really started engaging. I believe we were under about 500, 600 people, which has been the most we've ever had. So it's working, but we're trying to see how we can make other things work to get more, you know, involvement in a city this big.
Could we put a suggestion? Or do we have to wait until names come in before we say anything?
It would be before, like I said, once we open up the process, we will follow. And again, once we don't process, I will let you guys, how y'all can get involved. Our biggest thing with our Commissions, our City Council, and both Commissions, is we want to see you guys get involved in your specific ward to really push that community. So in Ruby, it would be in your. So working with, you know, all the area neighborhoods to really push, you know, Ward Five to get people to vote, you know, or suggest names for that park.
I had a comment, Executive Director. I think in reviewing, I think this looks good to have like a protocol in place. And I know that we've been doing good with like the process of community engagement. But to have something in paper to kind of help community members outline where maybe they can provide input on the park naming. And I'm glad that we're, the more people that are involved in the naming process, the better. And even though there may be disagreements around what gets named, the part is that people are involved in local government and can continue to like provide input in other areas of our city as well. But I maybe understand the process to help clarify from start to end and maybe add more value to the engagement that we have as Commissioners. You know, that what's said here, you know, recommendations, or at least that the council is able to hear from each of these areas. What I did not see here on here was the Youth Commission. I know, I don't know if it's within like the ordinance that limits or didn't include, or, but I think it would be good if there was at least, if we're starting over, their involvement in maybe, you know, this process.
No, they are involved. I must have got it, but like the big, this is like more of a summary. But yes, our Youth Commission is going to be very, very involved. And we have actually one of our Youth Commissioners here. So I'm glad to see her out here. But yes, our Youth Commission will be very, very involved as we have really got them coming out to a lot of our things. We're really excited with our Youth Commission. So they will be involved.
No, that would be great, yeah, to see them either before or after us in this Commission and Council review. I think if that's a suggestion. I also didn't see the, like a sort of virtual component in relationship to the engagement methods to gather broader community input. Maybe that's something that can be incorporated in whatever engagement that may be. Like, I'm imagining like a Zoom meeting or, but just, you know, I'm imagining like a Zoom meeting or, but just, you know, where it may apply, some virtual component, so folks can, whether it be during the development of the project, kind of the naming is kind of towards already at the end, but I just wanted, I know that in relationship to community engagement, I don't want to skip out on virtual engagement.
Yeah, I think maybe we, that's a great suggestion, maybe if we set up one of the neighborhood, let's say we have a special meeting at one of the neighborhood associations, to also have a virtual component where people can log in if they can't make it, or if they're driving on the road like Ms. Gaywell, so they can, you know, get their, you know, input heard and like that.
At least here.
But yes, like I said, we're trying to hit all things, and we know it may not be perfect right off the get-go, but working together as a community and working together with our commission, we can, you know, try to, you know, perfect it.
Yeah, and I think also that outreach to, I'm trying to include as much, I'm trying to identify where the public, or all of us can really, because when it gets down to very like ward-specific influence, I think, like I, maybe like neighboring wards too, just because I feel like our parks are so, there's so much more community members that they may lean over to the park in the different ward next door. So just as a comment, I think I would appreciate more of a, everyone kind of provides input in helping to, but I understand the sort of specific to the outreach, so I'm kind of weighing out both. It's like the individual outreach to the commissioner and that ward, but then also the neighboring wards and the city as a whole.
Yeah, no, absolutely, you know, when our city manager does meet with the city councils of that specific ward, he's also going to update the other council members, because like I said, it is a city park.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do want to, you know, focus first on that specific ward and that community, the neighborhood, but at the same time, even with you guys, you know, you know, maybe Ward Five, maybe Ruby, but we would want all you guys to, you know, get some suggested inputs as well too, but, you know, with Ward Five, we really want to focus on getting that neighborhood involved, especially the ones right around Tenth and Flower.
Great, yeah, as long as that initial start has like maybe an online component, so then that way folks from the Ward Five, but then also the general public, but yeah, just wrestling with that idea. But that's pretty much my, all my comments.
Okay. Thank you Executive Director, and, oh, would you like comment, comment Vice Chair Sadias Oris?
I remember when we did a survey, I think I was mailed like a postcard, and I completed that postcard and I even left it like on my fridge, so when I had friends come over, I had them do the QR code so they could do the survey. Could we do something similar to that, so near Tenth and Flower in the surrounding neighborhood, we could maybe mail them or maybe not necessarily mail them if it costs money, like drop them off?
Yeah, sure, we can see what we can do, and like I say, you mentioned the digital billboards earlier, you know, we will, you know, at least advertise on there, as well as any, you know, newsletters that go out, you know, our social media, so we'll look at all avenues, so we'll look into that as well too.
No, that's really great, thank you for kind of, for outlining this, it's helpful for, for the public, and I appreciate kind of the discussion. As it relates to maybe restarting the, is it to kind of receive and file the policy and procedure, or then you mentioned the naming, so is the naming going to restart again in January, or?
Correct.
Is the naming in conflict with the policy?
No, the, again, it was a direct in from, from the eighth floor to, let's, you know, really reach out, let's start this process over, let's see how we can get the community more involved and get more participants, because as I said, when we did stop it, we only had I think about fifty, it was about, about fifty, fifty, sixty, I believe, Tim, that, it was a little bit more, and, you know, it just, it wasn't a good hold, and then once, you know, the name came out, then we started hearing from all over, so we thought it'd be best, this would be the best way to, hey, let's restart this, let's get a fresh thing out there, let's see how many, how much the community can get involved, because again, Tenth and Flower, it's going to be, it's going to be a really nice park, you know, and there's been a lot of time, effort, and, you know, funding has gone into us, so we want to make sure we get it right.
No, and I think this is great, everyone's interested in wanting to name this park, and everyone's going to want to, going to come out to these parks, and this is a great way to continue to have folks to be involved. Is there like a start and time to when this naming is going to happen? So just that it's like, you know, everyone, I'm sure everyone's, I want to name that park, you know, so when it would be the start, and when would be the end of sort of the start of this process, which I believe you start by, you make a post, or what does the?
Yeah, so as, as Deputy Director Ortiz said, the park is out for bidding, so we really don't know when this park's going to be delivered, and like I said, we try to want to have it all flow together. So like I said, we're figuring, you know, January, we'll start the process of, you know, reaching out, posting, you know, reaching out to neighborhood associations, the community, social media, stuff like that.
And if you, I mean, if you need more time to start or come back, like in January, hey, this is what, this is for the public to know, this is the one and final time, you know, to name this park, so then maybe in, if the public wouldn't know about the meeting if we hosted in, for January, so maybe in January to come back to the commission with like the timeline of, and it may be even later, right, because the project won't be complete for, or at least you mentioned.
We don't know until, until, until we get a contractor selected, we get a timeframe, then we'll know more or less when it'll be completed.
I think that would be helpful for the commission and the public to know, at least to, let the public know in, you know, June is when we'll start this naming process again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Oh, yes.
Is the, yes, is the information both in English and Spanish?
We will put the information in English, Spanish, as well as Vietnamese, what we do in our standard, and we will also be, you know, the city, the main city website and their social media will be as well involved too, so it'll be a big ol' conjunction with all city agencies.
Thank you.
Great. So now we're coming towards the end of the meeting, we have one more topic, so thank you Executive Director, I'll now turn this over to Parks Recreation and Community Services Deputy Director Tim Bagano to present on the Parks Recreation and Community Services Staff Report.
Good evening, Chairperson Herrera and members of the commission, happy holidays to everybody. I have a very brief report, just because as we've all experienced before, the winter months is the slower months within Parks and Recreation, so I have a few highlights that I'll share from each section, and then a couple special projects that I want to highlight as well too. So, starting with our aquatics section, I just wanted to make note that we are starting our recruitment for new lifeguards, we start this month, so we actually are having our lifeguard trainer workshops that are going to be taking place towards the end of this month, and that's basically preparing our current employees to basically get certified at a higher level. And what that does is then they're able to teach lifeguards coming in, in the spring and, spring wave, all the techniques that we would be utilizing for our summer and moving forward and everything. One, one area of note, we do have our Emerging Lifeguard Leader Program, which will be starting shortly, and that basically is an opportunity for anybody, whether you have swim experience or no swim experience, to actually learn the technical skills of what it means to be a lifeguard in the hopes that it's a workforce development opportunity. And Eileen has already been referenced quite a few times, but she and I have already had conversations to where we're hoping that we can get her out to the pool this spring so that she can be a potential lifeguard for us next summer, so we're looking forward to starting that. And the reason why we're starting so early, a lot of people think swimming only takes place during the summer months, it takes almost a full nine months to prepare for those three months, with all the training that our lifeguards have to do, and in anticipation of Santa Ana, the community center that's going to be opening up there that also has a pool, we're hoping that will be online prior to summer twenty twenty-six, and then Memorial Park Aquatics Center, which we're anticipating will be open sometime in the September twenty twenty-six area, but that is going to be a year-round aquatics facility. So while it's opening in September, we're thinking that there may be a soft opening period, so that our lifeguards and our aquatics team will be able to learn what the water looks like, feels like, the environmental hazards that exist there, but we'll still be making it available to the public so that they don't have to wait till the next summer to start participating in our aquatics programs. In our athletics section, our registration for the twenty twenty-six boys' basketball season closed, and we have four hundred and sixty participants that are registered. We're, I would want to say that's either at capacity or near capacity for that program. The season begins shortly on December fifteenth, and opening games are scheduled for January Moving along, in our community engagement section, again, this is the, the group of team members that puts together our cultura, manages our website, all of our information that goes out to the community via our social media platforms. We currently are at ten thousand three hundred followers on Instagram, that's obviously keeps on increasing every single time that I come here, and they're doing a fabulous job with more and more creative posts. One area of highlight in our community engagement section, we have new sponsors and partners that we would like to announce. Vinfast Auto is a ten thousand dollar title-level sponsor for the Lunar New Year Festival that is going to be taking place at the beginning of next year, and then we've also secured Tuscany Espresso and Coffee at a forty-eight thousand dollar annual in-kind title-level sponsorship, and they've supported Plaza Navidad, which just took place last month, and they're going to be continuing to support Fiestas Patrias next year as well too, as well as our international older adults celebration and Dia de los Muertos in twenty twenty-six. Moving along, in our health and wellness section, just wanted to highlight that our total garden participation during the months of September and October was nearly sixteen hundred people as we went into the daylight savings time, so again, a very strong showing by our community gardens team and what they do out there in terms of all of the wonderful programming and workshops that they've developed and are delivering to the community. Our senior services section, it remains probably one of the most popular sections within the community. We have twenty-nine new participants over at Santa Ana Senior Center, in addition to twenty-eight new participants registered at Southwest Senior Center. In addition to all the wonderful things that they do in terms of our meal distribution, we've done nearly twenty-nine hundred meals at both centers during the last few months, which is about fifty-four per day at Santa Ana Senior Center and about seventy-eight per day at the Southwest Senior Center. In addition to our emergency food assistance program, the last couple of months, we've seen, we've assisted three hundred and thirteen seniors at Santa Ana Senior Center and about a hundred and eighty-eight seniors at Southwest Senior Center, which also includes thirty new registrants for that program. And our senior transportation program remains popular as ever. In our special events section, we've been involved in processing twenty-one third-party special events permits and seven film permits. So in the third-party permits, essentially beyond the citywide special events that our special events section coordinates and puts together, they're also reviewing applications that are put together by neighborhood associations, and also third-party, third parties that are interested in having special events within our park areas and everything. That could be county agencies, it could just be cultural agencies, but ultimately, they're responsible for making sure that they're following all the guidelines and regulations that are not only citywide but also countywide in terms of getting all the permits associated for their special event. So they are very busy, and during the holiday season, they tend to be a little bit busier, especially with third-party permits. Our Plaza Navidad event took place on November twenty-second, we had over twelve hundred people that attended with us at our tree lighting ceremony, which was about a hundred people less than last year, which is actually quite good, because our special events have been seeing a decrease in attendance because of what's happening in the community and all that type of stuff, but our special events team put forth a good effort, we had our mascots out there, as well as Santa and Mrs. Claus to take pictures, and everybody in attendance had a really good time. Would like to make you aware of our Tet Festival in next year, twenty twenty-six, it will be taking place February seventh, from one to six PM at Centennial Park. This is a very exciting opportunity for us to continue providing a Tet Festival for the larger community. This year is the year of the horse, and so we're going to be having food vendors and exhibitors, cultural programming, and this is a really exciting one for Parks and Recreation, because this is the event where we get to collaborate with our library team, and so the library team and Parks and Rec get together, and we get to put together a really nice event for the community, so we're really excited about that. Lastly, I want to highlight our teen, our youth and teen program, they've been putting on a lot of great programming, I think it was highlighted earlier when we were doing our employee and volunteers of the month. Our volunteer program is really starting to grow, and I'm really encouraged by the intergenerational programming, where we're taking visits over to the senior centers to participate in volunteering over there, and we have intentions to expand that program, so we're really looking forward to doing that over the next few months. Jorge, Superintendent Acevedo, mentioned the Kaboom Playground, very excited to bring that to the Sandpoint community and larger Santa Ana. It was a really great project altogether, because like Jorge said, it was a collaboration between Kaboom, Pac Life, First Financial Resources, and a lot of other community-based organizations, but most importantly, our Public Works Agency. They're not here, they must have had something to do, but without our Public Works Agency and partners, that project isn't half of what it is out there, and I'm really appreciative of their willingness to kind of, you know, get creative with us, us creative types in Parks and Recreation, we are looking for all the opportunities to, you know, brighten our community and our residents' day. This was, the Sandpoint Playground was actually identified as a top priority to actually contemporize the actual structure, so we were happy to work with Kaboom to actually bring a brand-new playground that is inclusive, we do have inclusive elements out there, which is starting to become one of the standards, I think Superintendent Acevedo said that we put in a new ADA path, there are elements there. Hawk, if you could help me out, what was the, the name of the one element that we put? The Swayin' Fund, is that what it was?
Yeah, the Swing Swayin' Fund, which is basically a large teeter-totter seesaw for our wheelchairs, so it's really awesome to see out there, and I actually, probably two days ago, saw someone utilizing it, so it was awesome.
Right, and so that, that's starting to become our standard as we go into our playground remodels and everything, so we're really happy to bring that to the Sandpoint community and to Santa Ana. Already mentioned Plaza Navidad, earlier in October, your park or your recreation team did a retreat, because we've been together now for almost three years coming out of the pandemic, and our team has grown exponentially during that time, and one of the things, because we're so busy and going so fast, is we haven't had the opportunity to get together and really discuss mission, vision, and objectives. So we took a pause in the month of October, and all of us got together for a two-day retreat where we did talk about that, and we've actually formulated draft mission, draft vision, and some objectives as far as what is going to drive us for the next three, five years. So after we finalize that, which we're planning on doing at the middle of this month, I'll be happy to share that with you at our next presentation so that you can hear what our mission and vision is as a division and all that good stuff. Lastly, very excited to share that our team, our recreation team, members of our recreation team today participated in the Kiwanis Gift of Giving event that took place at the Bristol Target. Essentially, we collaborate with the Kiwanis of Santa Ana and the Santa Ana Unified School District, there are kids that are identified that, by their schools, that get to participate in a shopping spree with volunteers from the community, and we had about twenty to twenty-five individuals from both our recreation and our zoo team that was, that were there shopping with these, these kiddos and, you know, getting to have a good time, great conversations, but I think what really struck us and what we're really excited, because this is the second year that we're participating in it, is that most of these kids, they have a hundred and fifty-dollar budget, they're not even thinking about themselves, they're thinking about their families, their little brothers, their little sisters, and it's so touching to be a part of that, to just know that their hearts are focused on not even themselves, but the, the people that surround them and everything, and so very thankful to the Kiwanis, thankful to the zoo team that joined us, where we have members that are actually going to be going out there tomorrow as well to assist with some more kiddos, but that's, you know, kind of just the reason for the season, right? So with that, I'd like to conclude my report, and I have, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Deputy Director Bagano, do we have any questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, one of your sponsors, I've never heard of them, but I'd like to give him recognition, because I love coffee, and is it a store or the coffee ground? And is it a store or the coffee grounds or is it a factory?
They actually have a storefront. And I think it's, if my memory serves me correctly, oh shoot, I know, I know it's in the, I think it's off of Memory Lane next to Morrison Park. I can find out the exact information, but they do have a storefront, they are a Santa Ana-based company, and we're very happy to be working with them. And they were out at our International Older Adults Celebration at Jerome, and I think everybody loved the iced coffee cart that they brought. So we're very excited to be working with them for our future events.
I would like their card and name because I also would like to serve at El Salvador Park some coffee.
Sure.
Like I said, I love coffee in itself, so a recognition, especially as much as they're giving to the community. I haven't seen Starbuck do that, just $5 or $10 a neighborhood.
Sure, sure, yeah.
But as long as someone is sponsoring that much, that they need some recognition. I think it's very important because many of my sponsors at El Salvador Park have contributed, need recognition in itself. So thank you very much for Tuscan Espresso and Coffee.
Of course, and I'll follow up with you, Commissioner Wu, to provide you their contact information.
Yeah, because I would like their card. Also, too, you talked about the community gardens and I just wanted to thank you, too, for our Harvest Festival. And we gave out 150 pumpkins out there and your staff has always been very good to us and the neighborhood recognizes people who can go out of our community to get pumpkin decorations and contest winners that we gave out prizes. Also, I'd like to tell everybody about the Tijapilar Posada, which is going to be December the 13th at El Salvador Park. And thank you very much for letting us use the center as we have for the last over 20 years and has always worked with the staff, has always helped us. So I just wanted to give them some recognition of that. So, and so that's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
Commissioner Diaz?
I just want to comment on today's event, that without planning, I was there at Target and I didn't know what was going on. And I see this bunch of kids and I see a bunch of police officers and, and then I saw Rocío and what's going on? And so they explained to me and it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful sight. And, you know, I was there doing some shopping and I could hear, you know, some of the kids that, you're right, they were thinking of, for my grandma or my mom or my little brother, my big brother, but, you know, and then they kept saying, you know, how about for you? It's okay, I just want to get for my mom. It was wonderful, it was beautiful. And I, you know, I think it's one of the best events that maybe we could do more and come in.
Sounds good. I'll pass your name over to the Kiwanis.
Yeah. Oh, you still had a, yeah, I saw you too. I recognized you. So great job. It was, it was wonderful, wonderful to witness that. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Diaz?
I wanted to ask you, are we planning to partner up with Kaboom to renovate some of the other old parks that we have, playgrounds that we have that are older in some of the parks?
That is the plan. We had, we forged a really great relationship with the Kaboom representatives and there were some discussions about some initiatives that they have. We also forged really great relationships with Pack Life representatives. And they obviously want to make sure that they're spreading their generosity to other neighborhoods, but we did have a brief discussion about how they wanted to come back to Santa Ana sometime within the next six months to nine months to identify another playground. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. And we have been in dialogue with one of the local universities who has a foundation that also wants to try to work with us in bringing a Kaboom Playground here to Santa Ana as well. So we may have one or two more opportunities to identify those playgrounds that are on our priority list and really focus on trying to get more Kaboom Playgrounds to the city.
Yeah, Kaboom is really, really great. Many, many years ago, I worked together with one of the charter schools that's in my neighborhood, it's EVC. And I was able to connect them and we got the first Kaboom Playground in the school. So my other question is, do we have or can we allocate some funding for, you know, for, my question is, do you, do we have funding allocated for sports equipment that is used through, you know, you know, that for the kids? How often do we replace it? Or do you guys talk to the volunteers? Do you guys have a meeting with the volunteers and ask or how does it work?
Sure, yeah, no, every single year, we go through the budget development process, just like every other agency within the organization. And we put together, you know, a programmatic budget for youth sports, adult sports, our athletic section. And so one of the things that I wrote down is to have a conversation with our athletic section to determine the state of our flag football, flags, and also our play clocks and everything, just to inquire and see where are we at? Because, you know, being recreation and, and being in PRCSA, you know, we are only 3% of the overall budget and everything. So the charge to our supervisors and all of our team is to squeeze as much as they can out of every single penny that we get, you know, through the budget process and everything. And so a lot of times, yeah, you know, we may hang on to equipment a little bit longer than maybe what we should, but it's because we're trying to extend the life, the lifespan of each of the pieces of equipment so that we can continue to offer those programs. Maybe time for a refresh. So we'll definitely look into that and I appreciate Gay's comments. Yes, of course.
Because I was thinking perhaps maybe we can look into one of the sponsors, like, you know, to have a clock with the sponsor's name on it and have the sponsors maybe help us out on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Or even the flags have the sponsor's name on the side, you know?
Yeah, we can get really creative.
So that was my question. Other than that, thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Jagua?
Actually, kind of piggyback off of Commissioner. If we were to ask, for example, Pack Life, you know, they donate to the playground, is there a way that we can put like a little plaque or something on the, you know, the bottom of the playground or look at, you know, naming it like Pack Life Playground and, but also then voting on it, you know, but a way to incentivize them to then gift more because they are shown they're represented there? Is that something we can look at?
Sure, through the Kaboom process, their logo and their branding is actually on the playground. So on the park sign, you'll see, I think, five brands. So there's the city, there's Parks and Rec, there's Pack Life, there's First Financial, and Kaboom. So all of them are represented and not that it tells the story of how that playground got there and it may be something that is just kind of like a glancing, like, oh, okay, well, why are those, you know, brands there and stuff? But I understand what you're saying. It may be in our best interest to kind of expand their brand a little bit, just so that we are, you know, showing our appreciation and everything like that.
I work for a large corporation as well and they, they love that type of stuff.
Sure.
They would probably give a lot more.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it may even, because, you know, as part of the process, I think Pack Life had over 100 volunteers that actually showed up on the build day and everything like that. So if we're looking for a volunteer of the quarter, it might be in our best interest to bring some of those representatives that we forged that relationship with and recognize them here in front of this body, just to, again, demonstrate our appreciation for them beyond, you know, what we already have through our social media and, you know, all the platitudes that we've shared with them of how appreciative we are and the community is and stuff. But point, point well taken.
When youth sports need supplies, how do they contact you? Who do they reach out to to say, hey, we need flags, we need a clock? How is, how does that work?
So each one of our sections is, you know, has a supervisor and they have support staff. So again, it's really up to them to identify where their equipment is and the lifespan and everything. In terms of the overall budget for our athletic section, I'm, I'm very confident that we have enough money to purchase additional flags. So that will probably just be something that I will mention to our athletic section, really ask them to make that a priority for next year's program. And again, it may just be where this was the last year that we were utilizing these flags, although it seems like it's been a couple of years now and stuff. But, you know, again, going into the end of this fiscal year, we'll definitely make an effort to prioritize that as one of those purchases going into next year's program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Deputy Director. And yeah, just kind of going, trying to, in my mind, trying to distinguish between the field permits and maybe their equipment that we don't oversee, is that correct? That's everything that's theirs and then our programming's equipment is what maybe needs to take a look at?
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Of course.
And then, yeah, looking, thank you for the Santa Anita Community Center and you're right, that opening it up before the summer of next year, it sounds like, wow, it's right around the corner, so excited for that. I was, I wasn't there the evening for Plaza Navidad, but I was there for setup, so I got to chat with some of the staff. I was doing some food distribution efforts with LGBT Center, but it was great to see staff set up. I did also want to, in relationship to the promotion, we changed our logo on the Santa Ana Parks Instagram back to, I don't know, I was like, where's our logo? I don't know, but do we have our, is, is it just stylistically moving back to?
That was at the directions of the city manager's office to, I guess, try to get everyone under one brand. So we were, as well as other agencies, directed to change it to the city of Santa Ana logo.
Was it the name changed too on Instagram or just the?
No, it was just a picture.
Just the logo?
Yeah, we're, we are still Santa Ana Parks Recreation.
I did notice that, I was like, okay, and I started scrolling down and when did that actually happen? I think it was maybe soon, recently, so it was, I noticed it at least. And then, duh, 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 duh. I know as it relates, maybe I missed it, actually, I'll bring this back up at a different time. But no, those are all the comments that I had in relationship to, let me look back.
All right.
That's all I have.
Wonderful. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Director Pagano. We'll now close the meeting with any closing comments. We'll start off with our Executive Director. Do you have any closing comments for the public and commission?
I actually do, I actually have something I really want to announce right now. In about 15 minutes, Simon and Honey will be arriving to the Santa Ana Zoo and those are our two Asian-clawed otters that will be going into our otter exhibit temporarily. And why do I say temporarily? They are on loan for us right now because as you guys know, that exhibit is for giant river otters. The giant river otters is going to take a little bit longer as they are an endangered species and we will be, and we have a lead right now to where our giant river otters will be coming from more than likely Europe, you know, so it's going to probably take six to nine months. So in the meantime, we have on loan from the, from Utah, Honey and Simon, which are about to arrive. And I just got from our zoo manager, Jennifer Walker, that they will be arriving in the next 15 minutes. So we're really, really excited for them to come check out their new habitat. And with that being said, I did send you guys an email, so December 20th, I hope to see you guys all at our Rivers Edge Grant Opening. With Simon and Honey arriving, all our new animals have arrived to our new exhibits we're going to have out there, which will be the otters, our spider monkeys, our golden tamarins, as well as moving the howlers over. So we're really, really excited to continue to highlight what your zoo has done in the past three to four years with the love and support of you guys, our youth commission, and especially the community, from removing the 50 monkey deed to changing Marbury to Zoo Lane, to the sidewalk improvements, to all the new exhibits, to tearing down the original exhibits to where now there is only one of the original exhibits left. So we are very proud to, when December 20th comes, and there will be an announcement very soon, that it's going to be a great day and there's going to be something, an incentive for everyone to come see the zoo. And we will be making an announcement real soon, so, but with you guys, I hope you guys are there, standing with us, there at the front, sitting with us, because it is a very, it's going to be a very, very big day for Santa Ana to see your zoo. I mean, we just got the accreditation back, that is huge. And you're going to see new animals there, you're going to see new exhibits there, and there's, there's so much more coming our way. So just want to highlight that. Also wanted to highlight, I wish we didn't have our meeting today, Sylvia, the talent show. We had a talent show out at Southwest and I've been getting some of the pictures and it looks like our seniors are partying through the night, so we are so, so proud. But I just want to highlight Juan Lada and his team of what we have done as well as with, you know, Deputy Director Tim Pagano, our senior centers, our senior programming, our senior transportation. I wish we had another building to put a senior center in because we are capacity at both and they are just loving what they're doing, the programs, the opportunities, them having their own event. So I just want to highlight, you know, our seniors and what our team does for them. And then last but not least, I will send you guys out on the, for next week on Tuesday. I hope you can join us out there at Santiago Park. And then last thing I got to say is, you know, happy holidays. Thank you guys for showing up and being here and being advocates for us. And it's always nice to see our youth commission show up here, too, so, and they have been great, too. So, you know, I look forward for you guys to have a safe and wonderful, happy holidays as well as when we come back in 2026. You know, we hit the road a lot more in our commission meeting, so I believe it's six or seven, Hannah? Yeah, I believe it's six out of the 11 we will be on the road. So it's really exciting to show what this team's doing, what we are highlighting out there. The Santa Anita Center is, I mean, the entire park is great. You know, I was out there just the other day, you know, the parking lot's been paved, the buildings are finishing up the touches, you know, we're really, really excited. The park is partially open, but we should be getting that open soon. For those of you who have gone by Centennial Park lately, the skate park now has lights on there and there are probably daily and nightly, nightly, I'm highlighting nightly, probably 40 to 50 of our user skateboarders out there using it. So it's really, really exciting to see. And for those of you in the Delhi neighborhood, you guys might have saw some new lights going up, so we're beginning those fields and that park really lit up at night, too, where it's going to create a more safe space and create more activities for athletics to go out there with the two flat fields, the large to small, as well as the baseball diamond. And Angels Park, if you guys have gone out there, too, you know, we just had that lit up a couple of weeks ago and the activity out there has been phenomenal. So these are things that, you know, other things that we do out there, you know, and plus what's coming up with, the Memorial Aquatic Center is going to be huge for the city and we are so excited to see and open up that in late summer as well as, I mean, the Centennial, five and six are beginning lights. And there's just so many things coming and we can't do it without you guys and you continue to advocate for us. So I just want to say on behalf of myself, all my coworkers in Parks and Recreation, thank you guys so much for being huge supporters of us and, you know, happy holidays.
Thank you, Executive Director. Let's have our Commissioner closing comments. Commissioner Diaz?
I just want to thank you for everything you're doing. You're doing a great job and I am extremely happy that you incorporate and then you listen to our constituents. And that's it. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Commissioner Jagua?
So I wanted to see if we could see if there's any overlap between the Planning Commission and our commission. I would like to be more involved, us in any process, like naming process of a center or like the aquatic center or anything like that that's related to the parks, just how there looks like they're going to be involved in. If we suggest a name, they still have to suggest a name? So anything that we kind of overlap and kind of helping to be more involved in that, like the naming of Zoo Lane or, you know, anything that falls under Parks and Rec, which is like library, any, any capital improvement projects, anything of that nature? You know, so.
Yeah, I can work with Director Ali and see if maybe we can, you know, what we can do. But like I said, after it comes through us, it just, it through the, I guess, the process, it goes through planning for approval and for the most part, they will take our recommendation. So, but I can look to see what ways we can maybe, maybe even in that meeting, bring some of you guys out there, too, to speak on our behalf, but I'll work with them, see what we can do.
Yeah, add more for us a little bit, so, thank you. Oh, happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
Maybe a park tour collaborative commission meeting. Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Gonzalez?
I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work all this year for allowing me to be part of the commission and all the learning I've been doing. And I want to wish everyone happy, safe, fun, joyous holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reyes?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone. And I'm still learning. I've been here for a long time. I'm still learning. And I'm loving it. Thank you for having me. And I wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe. And we're going to come back with a few pounds more, but it's okay. So take care. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wu?
I have no further comments, but I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and thank you very much, Park and Rec.
Thank you, everyone, for all the updates. As I was walking around the new part of Santiago Park, I noticed the water refill station. So I was really excited to see that at one of our new parks. And I'm hoping to see it at more parks in the future, as well as existing parks that we already have. And I'd also like to echo on the importance of having local native plants in all of our green spaces. Be safe and happy holidays.
Great. I just want to reminder, if we can calendarize our 2026 meetings on social media, that would be really great with our logo. I mean, we have our commission, commissioner shirts with our logos. Yeah, no, they can't take that away from me.
New commissioner shirts, new.
I thanked about Rosita Park sign. Thank you, Parks, for that. I also want to ask about our public art policy. Maybe was that something that is a discussion? Or will it come back before the commission again or no?
It will. Like I said, it's currently being reviewed by our Public Works Department for any changes. It's been reviewed by us. It's been reviewed by our city manager. So again, it's a long process. It's not something we want to get out there fast. We want to make sure it's correct and that we're capturing, you know, all, yeah, all aspects of everything when it comes to public art, not just in the parks, but then the whole city. Again, it is still in progress, and it is still a work in progress.
Thank you. I also want to thank, I didn't get to hear from Suzie's retirement. And, you know, I got to see the meeting. And Suzie, you are such an all-star for the amazing work that you got to do for our city. Personally, working with you since I started this commission, you've always been diligent. You're so amazing in building structure and envisioning the community's needs, central and focus on every project that you planned. And I know that your team misses you and, you know, I miss you and I will miss you. And just to, I just want to honor your time to the city. And, you know, whatever decision led you to that, know that, you know, it sounds relaxing to retire, but also that you gave so much to our city. And I just want to thank you and maybe have a recognition for her for all the work that she's done for the city. And I know she's mentioned that she's still a resident. So maybe in the future, she'll become a commissioner. And so I just wanted to also just generally thank our Parks and Rec staff, folks that are part-timers, folks that are full-time management, you know, from the bottom up. I think this commission really honors the time and commitment that each of you have put into supporting the community, but also giving your all to the city. And I just want to encourage you to continue the good fight of providing excellent service to our constituents. Without further ado, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a Happy New Year. And I think, let's see, the next Parks and Recreation Community Services Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 22nd at the Santana Senior Center at 5:30 PM. We'll see you then. I hereby adjourn the meeting at 7:06.